Welcome to the Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes, while participated remotely, must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will start with correspondence. I'll turn it over to Nicole.
This school may receive the following correspondence. An email from Mr. Jeremy Dugan dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, regarding masking and access to the Massachusetts Immunization Information System. That's all for today.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up, we have a possible motion for approval of the minutes.
We move that the school committee approve the minutes for the October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will call for a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And yes for me. All right, we will move to visitor comments. And it's great to see some folks joining us tonight. Just a couple of notes before we get to visitor comments. Just a reminder that when you speak, you have three minutes. Direct all comments to the chair. Feel free to ask questions. We may or may not answer them as the meeting goes along. You're always encouraged and able to send us an email. Also, just a note for stuff coming up later in the meeting, because I think there might be some questions about what's happening with the mask mandate and things like that. So just a note, we will discuss tonight what the high school vaccination rate is. If it's over eighty percent and the committee votes to authorize a superintendent, he can submit and a document to the state, and then the state will have to approve it. If the state approves it, then we'll have to have another meeting in which the committee could decide to change the mask policy. So regardless of what happens tonight, it's still a process, and it will take us some time to come to decision. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware that it's a process, and we will go through it as we have to. So if anybody would like to make comments, please either use the raised hand function, raise your hand, and I will be happy to recognize you. We will start with Jessica. Jessica, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Okay, so three months ago, you all decided to mandate masks for the pre-K students at Wolf Swamp Elementary, despite the fact that they were not included in the DESI mandate or the Board of Health mandate. And the Mass Department of Early Education and Care says that masking of the two-to-four age group should be at the family's discretion. I found it odd that nobody on this school committee, which is elected to establish educational goals and policies, none of you even considered the implications of masking toddlers in an integrated pre-K program, where literally half of the students are special needs, and a hundred percent of the students attend the program almost exclusively for social and emotional development. This is when they learn about empathy and emotions, skills that are almost entirely dependent on the ability to interpret facial expressions. I also found it odd that none of you gave any consideration to the mask guidelines, the Department of Education guidelines for preschool learning experiences. Number nine says that early language and literacy set the stage for later learning. Children's language skills are strong predictors of academic success. Early childhood is an important time in the development of vocabulary and other language skills. These skills provide the foundation for learning to read and write and for later academic achievement. A mask standard for social and emotional learning, actually number one, says that the child will be able to recognize, identify, and express his or her emotions. I the only actually thing that was even asked about when you guys were deciding on whether or not to mask the pre-K was Mary Keen asked if Bob Bayevsky, who was in the meeting, she asked him if the Board of Health had meant to leave the pre-K off of their mandate, and he said, no, we didn't talk about it. He was lying because the mandate specifically said it was not to apply to under age five. I emailed every single one of you immediately to tell you that you had done what you did and mandated the pre-K to wear masks based on a lie. None of you answered me. None of you responded. None of you explained it. None of you, to this day, have given me any data, any any piece of the puzzle that went into your decision. I'm still waiting, so I hope you address that at some point tonight, and I I hope you lift that mandate because I think it's completely inappropriate, and I don't even think that you can meet the standards for the masks on the math guidelines for pre-K learning experiences if you're putting masks on their faces. So I would like you to address that at some point tonight.
Thank you, Jessica. Do we have other folks who would like to make a comment? All right, going once, going twice. Okay, here we go. So it looks like Maddox, David, and Matt, you are up.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
All right, so my name is Maddox.
My name is David. And we're seventh graders at Williams Middle School. We're here to tell you about an incident that we've had, we had today about masks. So in Spanish class today, I like trouble keeping my mask over my nose. So it slipped under my nose, and the teacher reminded me. And then I put it back up, and then when I was talking, it slipped under again. And then she sent me to the nurse, and at the nurse's office, she taped the mask to my nose. Which later, there's like a rash like on my face now because of the tape. I would just like to say like, I think we should. Yes. Yeah, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Katie Hastings, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm sitting in a dark car, so you probably won't be able to see me at soccer game. But I do want to address the fact that Maddox, good for you, David and Matt, for coming forward with that situation. I did hear what happened today at Williams Middle School and absolutely appalled by the fact that a nurse would put tape on a child's mask. The child was kicked out of class. He was told to that if he comes back again and the mask falls down below his nose, the teacher will tape it on. That I can't even believe this is even happening in our town. Is this the way that our kids are going to school? This is completely inappropriate. I hope that the news is hearing this. I hope that the parents call the school and complain. I worry about what's said behind closed doors every single day about the masks. My daughters come home exhausted. I've seen bloody noses. I have seen kids get yelled at. My fourth grade daughter came home today and told me that there is a teacher standing outside the door who's handing out masks to kids that don't have them. She looked right at the fifth grade safety patrol officer as fourth graders didn't have masks on and said, see, fourth grade is the problem. That is highly inappropriate, should not ever be said in front of a student. My daughter heard it. As she's standing there with a homemade mask that does absolutely nothing, so it's very hypocritical. These children, as I have said before, should never have to bear the burden of the immunocompromised and the elderly. They are, they're the only place that they, that we are mandating masks is in school. Yet we can go to restaurants and be shoulder to shoulder. We can have thousands of us at sporting events. It is only school. Why? Is it to please the union? Is it to keep federal funding in the schools? What is the reason? Because it is not about health at this point. Also, I want to address the fact that I did call one of the high schools, one of the very first high schools in Massachusetts, who have implemented the eighty percent mark and have removed masks. I talked to the superintendent's office and also the principal of the high school. Trying to talk fast so I don't need my time. Basically, they ensured me that students who are unvaccinated will be masked and are masked, and parents must sign permission slips along with a proof of vaccination that they download into a Google platform. Every teacher in the school is then given a list of who has submitted these permission slips and who has not, therefore, who is vaccinated and who is not. And any child that is not on that list will not be permitted to move their, will not be permitted to remove their mask, and if they do, they are disciplined appropriately. This is segregation. Marty, I've talked to you about that so many times. This is violating so many, so many things, but most of all, this is segregation. This is, you're vaccinated, you're not, you get special privileges, you don't. At eighty percent vaccination, when does, when do we say this is enough? Enough is enough here. We need to move on with our lives. And the last thing I want to say is, I really need this committee to start meeting in person. We need to start setting an example to people that life can go on and we can meet. I'm sure you've all been to restaurants. I'm sure we've all been to parties. I'm sure we've all been to several other things that involve people getting together. These meetings are absolutely crazy to be still remote. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Katie. Just one quick response. I know this is not a discussion, but I just want to make clear for everybody who's listening. The mask mandate in schools is the Department of Education. It's the state.
Not the pre-K, not the pre-K.
Jessica, we've heard your comment. We know that's true. I'm not disputing that. For kindergarten to twelfth grade, the Department of Education mask mandate is in effect until January fifteenth. So that is not our decision. It's not the town decision. It's the state, just to be clear on that. Other comments? All right, thank you very much. Again, as always, we always appreciate hearing from the community, whether here or by email. And we are very happy to read any emails that folks want to send to us. And thank you very much for your comments. We will move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention to the Williams student, I didn't catch your first name because there was three across the screen. Was it Maddox?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry that that happened to you, and I'm sure that Mrs. Nelson and Dr. O'Shea are investigating, checking things out, and I hope that your rash goes away soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Gianna, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the community members that came to the middle school discussion forum last night. They had great feedback and guidance and insight to share, so we appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up, Gianna. Anyone else? Suzie?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the organizers of the Leaf Gala. There was a gala on Saturday evening, and it was a nice evening. They were outside setup and inside setup, and it was lovely, and lots of people have donated a lot of items for the auction. Just wanted to say thank you for all that Leaf does to support the educational programs at our schools.
Absolutely. Thank you, Suzie. Other comments? Nicole?
I wanted to give a shout out to the Long Meadow High School Model Congress and Model UN Club and Advisors for their participation in the recent Princeton Model Congress event. And a big thank you to all of the community members who helped make that happen.
Excellent. Thank you, Nicole. Dagan, go ahead.
All right, I'm good now. To Maddox and to you boys, I recognize you. I'm so proud of you. It takes a lot of courage to stand up in front of a legislative body and say any grievance that you have or anything that is going on in your life. So I recognize you and well done, boys.
Thank you, Dagan. Anything else? All right, we will continue on the agenda. We have no business with guests. It's our administrative reports, and I'll turn it over to Marty.
Thank you. A few items in your, in the report that's in your packet. Thank you to DA Goodloty and his staff for visiting our middle schools to talk about internet safety in the last month or so. They also shared with us a document that the Youth Advisory Board had put together called an Internet Playbook, and it's a document that we have shared out with families. It's a good tool for parents to look at if they want to understand the latest and greatest apps, and it's written written for parents by young people. So it's an effective communication tool. Congrats to Kayla Worland, who received her recognition as a Teacher of Excellence from the Country Music Association. A very distinctive national award for an outstanding educator. So congratulations to Kayla for that. We have our Professional Development Day lined up on November twelfth. It's our next and last full day of professional development. Chance, we'll kick off the day with a chance for staff to connect over breakfast, and then following a virtual full district convocation, then I'll lead. Elementary staff will dive into and explore iReady. We'll have some of our elementary paraprofessionals, we'll work on behavior strategies with our BCVAs. And then most of our educators beyond the groups that I mentioned will participate in professional development on universal design for learning. So that's a sort of a kickoff of an important goal of our district improvement plan. School Adjustment Counselors will focus on childhood trauma. In the afternoon, we'll provide a lot of needed time for collaboration for staff. So looking forward to that TD day on November twelfth. Also, in the, in the report is the regular report that you've seen on the number of active cases and number of students in quarantine for exposure. You see that we've declined somewhat in active cases, but quite a few students. I think it was over sixteen at the time that this report was written, sixteen students that were in quarantine for exposure. I think that has since dropped off. Test and Stay continues to be a really good tool to help us keep kids in school, so I'm appreciative that we have that in place. If you're, if you're interested, I've restored the superintendent's corner. This is the LCTV production, and had a chance to interview today students that were involved in our internship program and students involved with Career Tech. Really is a way to demonstrate the opportunities that students have to experience and grow off campus. So it was a great conversation with some really interesting students. And while, you know, in the midst of a busy year, this is also a year that we are experiencing the tiered focus monitoring experience coordinated by the elementary or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have uploaded evidence of compliance with a number of civil rights and special education standards. And this is part of a regular monitoring program that DESI puts districts through. Thanks to Sue Bertrand and Jean Fontaine for leading that effort. It's a very intensive process. I'm very certain that we will come out of it with glowing reports from DESI. There will be a press release that will go out, and we will also give parents an opportunity to provide the DESI Public Monitoring Team with some feedback as well. So parents can be on the lookout for that. So that's the tiered focused monitoring program that we're in the middle of. Couple of things that are not in your written report. A hard copy was, is at your seats tonight. It's an advisory from Murphy Hesse, Tumi and Lahane, our council, regarding the applicability of the federal vaccine requirement, which is in flux right now, but the applicability of that to local, to various employers. And there's some information in there that as of now, it does not apply to public school entities in Massachusetts. I'm not sure the dust on that is completely settled, but we don't anticipate that that federal requirement, if it were to stand up to some legal tests that it's facing, we don't anticipate that it would ultimately apply to us. So that's sort of hot off the presses, and, and, you know, if you want to talk about that further, perhaps in an upcoming meeting, it might be worthy of your time. And then also wanted to highlight an email that I'm sure the committee saw, the community saw, that I had sent to families not too long ago, which basically outlined a number of positions that we are seeking to fill, like so many organizations in the, in the country today. We're short-staffed in, in some really important areas, particularly with our school nurses. So it was a really unusual step that I took to actually send that out to the community to say, hey, if you know of anybody that might be interested and willing to take a look at the vacancies that we have, please do. So it's the staffing challenges that so many organizations are facing across the country right now are also being experienced here in Long Meadow. So we'll, we we're being creative and doing a lot of outreach and trying to fill these vacancies. But it continues to be a challenge for us. I thought that that was worth mentioning tonight. So that's all I have in my report, and obviously later on, we'll talk about vaccination levels in relation to our masking policy.
Marty, did you want to mention the middle school forums?
Oh, sure. Yeah, thank you. So in addition, we had a middle school forum last night. And I was appreciative that representatives of the Permanent Building Committee came by and really gave us some good feedback and shared some insights on, on the process that they experienced as they worked towards the construction of the Adult Center. So that was very helpful. Put a plug in for next Monday night. There is a virtual forum. It's a sort of town hall style broadcast, and it will be interactive and give community members an opportunity to ask questions in a, in a hopefully sort of conversational way. So the link for that broadcast has been sent out to the community and to the local press as well. So open really just to, you know, continue to generate awareness. And, you know, at some point, I would love to get MSBA representatives to Long Meadow, to this, to your committee, to give you a chance to ask them questions directly about the process. So continue to work on that. I do anticipate that that will happen at an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Comments or questions for Marty? Mary, go ahead.
Marty, I know at a meeting a few weeks ago, we talked about Paper, the tutoring program. I was just wondering if we subscribed and also wondering how we're supporting the students who are home in quarantine and how they're doing returning after extended absences.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I might ask Sue to jump in. She's kind of taken the lead on the rollout of Paper. It was the online tutoring service that the committee supported the purchase of not too long ago. So the launch date, Sue, you want to take it over?
The launch date is for students is the twenty-second. Teachers have access now, starting today, to the PD they have to take in order to use it. It's about an hour of asynchronous PD. They'll do that between now and the twenty-second, and we're getting marketing kind of stuff out to students and so that they know how to use it. They'll use it pretty easily. I think the teachers will be the ones who need to do a little PD in it, but so that's up and running, and we're looking forward to that launch. And I'm really happy to say one of the areas that we're not short on staff were tutors. So a lot of our educators stepped up to the plate and volunteered their time to tutor students. So the students who are quarantined have the option of working with a tutor, typically a school employee. So it's been working out pretty well.
Any other questions or comments on Marty's report? All right, we will move to the Chair Report. I have just a couple of things to share with folks. First, I want to echo Marty's comment on Kayla Worland's award. I was lucky enough to have my son work with her in lyrics for two years, and it really was transformative for him. And there's no more deserving teacher for this honor. And just, yeah, all of us know how hard she works and how deserving she is of this award. So congratulations to Kayla Worland. Couple of notes to the committee. Marty mentioned the middle school forums. Again, we want to encourage everybody to come out to the next one on Monday. Also, just want to share with the committee that I spoke with Rebecca Townsend, who is the town moderator. And she is looking forward to continuing her efforts to educate the community about town meeting. And she's offered to come to the committee at some point in the future to talk about how folks in the community can be engaged, and if our meeting can be a way to help folks learn about town meeting, I thought that was a great idea. So in the future, we'll have her here, and we'll talk about the town meeting and how it how it's something folks don't really know a lot about often, how important it is in the town. So that's something for a future meeting. And then the final thing I will say is, please get vaccinated. Please get your kids vaccinated. Now that the five to eleven-year-olds are eligible, please get your kids vaccinated. It's going to give us the opportunity to make decisions. We're going to have flexibility in terms of things we can do. So please get your kids vaccinated. It'll be a wonderful thing for them and for the community. So thank you as always for doing that. All right. That's all that I have. I will turn it over to Dagan for the student report.
All right, all right, all right. So for athletics, the cross-country boys and girls team just won their league meet. Congratulations to them. They were all, all this week have been walking around with their trophy in the hallway. We'd love to see it. For clubs, as Nicole said, the Model Congress Club, Marko Karz and Mark U N had met the Princeton Conference. As a leader in that club, I can say As a leader in that club, I can say all the youth did an amazing job, especially at their first conference of the year. For classes, the class of 2025 is holding a dodgeball tournament. Let's see how that goes. Hopefully not too many red balls are flown around. Another big, big thing, thank you to LCTV for broadcasting the National Arts Society induction. This year we had a record inductee number of 90, including myself. So we thank you for that and congratulations to all the students who made it in. And finally, the ensemble lyrics that was ran by K Whirl sung at the opening of the new adult center. Good job to those guys. I heard your performance. It was amazing. Well done. That is all.
Thank you, Dagan. All right, we will move on to other reports, the LPV EC. Mary?
No report. Our next meeting is November 17th.
Excellent. Thank you. Energy and sustainability, just one update from town meeting. The town meeting passed an article where all new projects in town will have to take into account climate change and sustainability. So that's something that will happen moving forward. We don't have our next meeting until December. All right, SEAL, Gianna.
Thank you, Kevin. SEAL continues its valuable efforts towards creating awareness for our students with different learning abilities and special education needs. Trying to create a community awareness so that everybody involved with the Long Meadow Public Schools can participate in those meetings and support however they might be able to, even if you don't have a child with special learning needs. There is a meeting, a Special Education Alliance at SEAL. There's a SEAL meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, November 10th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And you can visit sealma.org for more information on getting the Zoom link. And also the agenda or reaching out to the SEAL leaders. Tomorrow's meeting will be with meeting the new assistant principals slash special education supervisors at the elementary schools. So please take a look at sealma.org and get some information about Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Tax ceiling task force. Jamie, you want to take that one?
Yeah, Tom or Marty, if you guys, you both were there as well, if you want to chime in. Yeah, I'm happy to take a shot at it. So the, the draft minutes are in your packet and I think they'll sort of reflect the tax ceiling task force interest in sort of re-energizing its work around educating the community about the tax ceiling. And really though the, the town meeting had declined, the opportunity to pursue legislative relief from the $25 tax ceiling. The feeling was that among the task, tax ceiling task force, that they wanted to renew that effort. And so that was just an initial meeting and the next meeting is December 8th at 7:00 PM. Anything?
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Marty. All right, we will move on to subcommittee reports. We have no finance subcommittee report, no policy subcommittee report. Curriculum Subcommittee met yesterday. And one, one note for the committee. I want to thank Suzie for all of her efforts on all of the committees that she's on. And we, with consultation with Suzie, she's on too many committees. So Suzie has said she's going to step back from the curriculum Subcommittee. And that means everybody else has an opportunity, if you're not already on the curriculum Subcommittee, to join that Subcommittee. So I would ask folks who are not on that Subcommittee to think about if they would like to join that group and let me and Marty know. And at the next meeting, we will have a person to add to that Subcommittee. So Suzie, thank you.
Thank you.
So to the report of the Subcommittee, Nicole, is that you?
That is.
All right.
All right. Thank you again to Suzie for your time on the committee and look forward to seeing who our third will be moving forward. The curriculum Subcommittee meeting, or met yesterday with Dr. Shea, Ms. Bertrand and Principal Landers. We got an update on data relating to student enrollment in the CP2, CP1 honors and AP courses and the ways that students move between these levels across different disciplines. We had some good discussions surrounding UDL and multi-tiered systems of support in all classes, as well as hearing more about some upcoming and continuing professional training on these topics. We also discussed the current recommendation systems at the middle and high school levels and discussed some possible ways to make that process more transparent and accessible to families as they make their course selection decisions. And moving forward, we'll be continuing to look at enrollment and performance data with an eye towards how we can best support adjustments to the high school program of studies and the leveling system to ensure a personalized pathway to success for our postgraduate students.
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions for Nicole in the Subcommittee? All right. Evaluation Subcommittee. Who would like to take that one?
I don't know. Marty's going, we met last week and Marty is going to present his annual plan to the whole committee this evening. So he just reviewed it with us at the meeting.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Any comments or questions? I know we'll hear more about that later on. All right. Ongoing business, mask policy. Marty, hand it over to you.
Give me a minute. I'll just pull up a document so folks at home can follow along. Give me one second. Okay, so since your last meeting, we had really following along with the committee's hopes and expectations, done a deeper dive on the evidence of vaccination at Long Meadow High School. And so we had done some outreach to families who, just to make sure we had complete immunization records, we had done some outreach to understand if our records were complete. And so following a sort of painstaking, hand by hand analysis of that by our nurse leader, it's a confidential document that she alone has access to. We know that 731 of the 906 students at the high school are, have submitted evidence of vaccination. And when we combine LHS and central office staff, there's 134 of 173 individuals are vaccinated for total of 865 out of 1,079 individuals under this, under this roof. And so when we combine those populations, we can say confidently that we have achieved that 80% threshold. So 80.17% of the individuals that work on this campus under this roof on a regular basis have submitted evidence of vaccination. And so that, you know, that brings along with it that access to the, potentially access to that DESI off-ramp, as they call it. So right now, per existing DESI guidance FAA school demonstrates that 80% of the individuals in that school have been vaccinated. And if the school can attest to that, then that school would no longer be subject to the mask requirement. But whether or not the school would avail themselves of that 80% off-ramp is at the discretion of the school committee. And so I think really for tonight's purposes, just to let you know that we have reached that threshold and really seek some direction from the committee as to whether or not you would like us to make that attestation to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm confident, very confident that we can in fact submit that attestation. And so, you know, then, you know, sort of taking this one step at a time, we would need to wait for DESI to approve that attestation. And at that point, the committee could take on the question of whether or not it wanted to allow the vaccinated individuals the option to unmask. And so that, the thought right now is that, you know, we, we just want to wait, again, taking it one step at a time, find out if DESI approves that attestation. And then come back to the committee with a, a plan for your consideration. If in fact you did want to adopt that plan and adopt that optional approach to masking at LHS, again, covering LHS and the central office. So that would be the sort of the, the next steps on the, on the third slide of this slide deck. But putting together that administrative recommendation will require some time. I think even as some of the, the public comment period suggested, there's a lot that we have to take into consideration in terms of monitoring that adherence to that. And, and, you know, so, and, and really the rollout of that and the timing of that. And so there's a, there's a fair amount of communication that would be involved. We would want to secure parental permission. And so we have to, you know, kind of work through that process. But really the thought is to use an upcoming school committee meeting to bring you a recommendation for your consideration, if in fact you did want to access that off-ramp. So again, we have hit the 80%. And, you know, thank you to our nurse leader and to the folks at Long Meadow Human Resources for working on us, working with us on that, on that, and putting together this in a, in a very painstaking, detailed way. So for your consideration.
Thank you, Marty. Comments and questions? Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thank you, Marty. This is excellent news for the high school, even though we, we just made it at the 80.17%. We made the 80% that DESI requires in order for us to get, in order for us to qualify for that. And I am looking forward to you submitting that and hearing back from DESI as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Suzie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. It is good news, definitely. And hopefully this process can go forward. The question I have is about the, what this, what this does with the contact tracing protocols and quarantining? If, if the, if the attestation is approved and if we decide to remove the mask mandate for vaccinated individuals, can you give us some insight into that?
Yeah, that's, I hope I answered your question. If not, let me know. But the, the contact tracing protocols, the COVID response protocols would not change if we were to access this off-ramp. In other words, unmasked individuals would be more likely to be identified as close contacts, subject to quarantine. And so that's the type of information that we would want to get out to parents so that they can make decisions with their eyes wide open on this. So that's, that's a really good sort of cautionary point. And that, that's the type of information that we want to pull together and, and, and put together for you in a presentation and a recommendation next week. But thank you for bringing that up. Is that, is that what you're referring to? Yeah.
That's exactly what I was referring to. I just think it's important for the community to know that, that, that still doesn't change, especially, you know, because even though you're vaccinated, there's still, there's still a contact tracing protocol that involving unmasked individuals that requires a quarantine if you're deemed a close contact. So I just wanted to make, make sure people were aware of that.
So, yeah, we want to, we'd have to review that carefully to make sure that people understand how that, how that weight factors into it.
Thank you, Marty and Suzie for that. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up to that, Marty. But the test and stay would still be an option for the people that chose not to wear masks.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, test and stay is still, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Superintendent, for this information. And I know Superintendent, that you mentioned, you know, there will be a lot, if this attestation is approved, there's going to be a lot to consider in terms of, you know, administrating, monitoring. I just wanted to highlight, I think she's still on here, I just wanted to highlight Katie Hastings' concerns about, you know, the, the differences between those who are vaccinated and those who are not. So I just want to make sure that that is part of the discussion. I think it's a very important point that Katie raised.
Thank you, Gianna. Other comments and questions? Mary, go ahead.
Marty, you kind of alluded to this also, but I think if we will need to assure the community that if we, if, if parents are sending students to school in masks because they want their child to be wearing a mask, that we have really firm protocols in place for ensuring that that child is wearing a mask all day and vice versa. So I, I just feel like as part of the presentation, I look forward to hearing, you know, what the plans are for monitoring. And Gianna, you kind of alluded to this too, but I think that that will be important for peace of mind whose families do decide to mask and, you know, to know that there are strict protocols in place to ensure that the kids are wearing masks, not only in the classrooms, but in common spaces.
I think there's, as you suggest, there's sort of two sides to this. There's sort of the, the monitoring side, which is sort of administrative and managerial almost. And then there's obviously the, the medical side of it. So whatever we do, we would want to, you know, do it with, with caution and, and be prepared to pivot if, if for some reason it, it becomes a disruptive thing for Long Meadow High School, you know, because of the management of it and the administration of it, or if there were solid health reasons to have to go in a different direction. So again, it's a good night to sort of surface these questions, but I'd ask people's sort of patience with us to give us a little time to pull this together and, and bring forward a recommendation. But those are the types of, of considerations that we, we want to account for as best we can. Yeah.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. I, I know that we're talking about the high school in particular, but I did just, I saw Jessica still on here. I just wanted to apologize to Jessica for having to reschedule our meeting. And just, Jessica, I will be reaching out to you again because I do value your input, especially I work with pre-K population at my own school. So I do take notes when you share and I look forward to talking to you.
Thank you, Gianna. Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm all for what the high school numbers here, that's great. The one thing I want to make sure before we transition, because I don't-
The one thing I want to make sure before we transition, because I don't think we have to take a vote on this, is I, I would like to discuss the pre K um, as part of this masking. You know, I think it's appropriate and, and very much kind of within our realm. Um, so before we transition, I want to make sure we kind of revisit that, please.
Uh, yeah, Jamie, absolutely. Um, and I think maybe we'll focus on the high school right now. And then Marty, if it's all right with you, maybe we'll then do the pre K at least to, you know, talk a little bit more. Is that all right? Okay. Nicole, go ahead.
I'm just wondering when, um, planning for the next, um, meeting that we might need to have where we'll be hearing a little bit more about recommendations. If we could also make sure that we have the opportunity to hear from our, um, school physicians and other Board of Health officials and what their thoughts are on this as well. And just to say that it's wonderful to see these numbers, um, continuing to increase. So to echo, um, our chair's earlier comments, please continue to get vaccinated.
Jamie, go ahead.
Um, ju- just one other, just point on, on the high school is obviously, I don't think we're solving it tonight. But whenever we do lay out that plan, if we can talk about the cafeteria um, and other decisions we've made as part of, you know, obviously we weren't hit the numbers we wanted to be at. But we've made some pretty big alterations within the cafeteria. But it's, you know, fairly social. Uh, but last time I walked through the, through there, it wasn't very socially set up. Um, so I definitely want to talk about that as well, once we get, get back to, you know, making a decision and taking a vote on it next meeting.
Thank you, Jamie. Marty, I wonder if, if you could maybe give us tonight a, a little bit of, of benchmarking context with what, what's going on with some other schools who have done this. And, and again, I, I guess I'm just sort of curious, who else is doing this? And if we know anything from their experiences going down this path?
I've, I've been in touch with the, uh, the Hopkinton superintendent and, and, um, in terms of their rollout. I haven't had a chance to connect back in terms of their experience. So I think they implemented it beginning of November one. So our intention, in fact, I talked to Tom Landers about this today, is really to identify the schools that have, um, hit the eighty percent and access the off ramp and find out about their experience and, and how it's gone. Both from a, through a, looking at it through a health lens, but also through a sort of educational managerial lens. So I think that's an important part of the work that, that we need to do. But Hopkinton did, did, uh, share with me the, uh, sort of permission slips that they, uh, used to, um, secure permission from, from parents. So there, there was a, you know, the way they rolled it out, they definitely were trying to be respectful of, of parent, uh, wishes on this. So, um, so that's something that, that we'll have to continue to do. Um, I, I think, you know, what, what Hopkinton has done, which was of interest to me. But again, I'm trying to put all the details together for you on this at some point. But they, they had a, a trial period and so they committed to it for a, a period of time. And, you know, at the end of that, that window of time, they were going to look at it to see uh, what the school's experience was, what kids' experience was, what the, what the health impacts were, you know, how it played out educationally. So, um, that's something that they're in the middle of right now. So that the idea of a, of a, um, uh, of a provisional period seemed to make sense to me. So I, I suspect that's something that we want to incorporate into a recommendation that we bring you if you do meet next week. Uh, does that answer your question, Kevin? Was there something else I'm missing there?
No, I, I guess I'll, just my follow up would be, you know, if we do end up meeting next week, I think it'd be great to know what other schools are doing this. I mean, we, we talk about Hopkinton all the time, but there, I know there's more than Hopkinton. Um, and I think it'd be great to, to know who else is doing this besides Hopkinton, right? Uh, but obviously we don't expect that now. It'd just be great to have that if we do end up meeting next week. Other comments or questions on the high school issue? So there is a, a possible motion because I think we do need to, uh, vote to ask Marty to move this forward. Um, so there's a possible motion if anybody wants to make it.
Well, thank you. I move that the school committee direct the superintendent of schools to file the eighty percent rate threshold school attestation form for Long Meadow High School.
Do we have a second?
I can.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you to everybody who made that possible. Um, again, doing all that data collection, we know is a huge effort. So thank you to everybody who was able to, uh, document this stuff. And, and Marty, thank you for moving this forward. Uh, I think, um, it, it definitely falls with under, falls under this item, the mask policy. Um, Marty, I wonder if you could just speak to the, the pre K issue. And, and again, maybe that's something we need to take up at our next meeting in, in greater detail. But if you could speak to that now, I think that would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, it's, it, it is a sort of discretionary part of your policy in the sense that the, uh, the D E mandate is for students five and up. Uh, D E does still, uh, strongly recommend that younger children wear masks. And so, uh, I would say that, you know, tonight at least, uh, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation to you to, um, remove our preschool students from your mask policy. Certainly that's, uh, your discretion and purview to do that. Uh, but, you know, tonight I wouldn't be prepared to, to make that recommendation to you. Uh, the preschool program at Wolf Swamp, it, it operates under the auspices of D E. D E is strongly recommending masking for students, uh, below age five. And the preschool program is very much intertwined with the, the wider, um, Wolf Swamp, um, program. In other words, the preschool students are, they're not in a, in a separate wing of the building. They're, they're, uh, they go to the specials classroom, they access the art room, the music room, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, you know, I, as, as in, Sue has spent some time over there for sure. And, and I, I've been there and I've talked to the director, uh, the preschool director. And she feels that, you know, they have a lot of provisions in place to, you know, deal with the, admittedly, but there's a downside to masking, right? I mean, I, I think we, we all, we need to really acknowledge that, that we would rather not see children wear masks. But I think the, the preschool staff is, you know, exercising that common sense rule when, when they have children who, um, whose mouth they need to see. Uh, they're, they're going outside, they have clear masks. They, you know, the, the director described a, a number of strategies that they use to, to offset some of those challenges. So, uh, and again, I worry that if those preschool children are unmasked, that they would be subject to quarantining if, um, if there is an exposure. And so our number one goal all along is to keep children in school. And if younger children, especially unvaccinated, un- younger children are in school unmasked, we're really creating a problem where they, they potentially could be close contacts and would be subject to quarantine. And we know that in a preschool especially, um, you know, separating children at that three foot distance standard is especially problematic. So I, I'm, I'm sure that if there, you know, anytime there are positive cases in our preschool and our, or in our K program, for that matter, we're more likely to see children inside that three foot threshold where contact tracing and quarantining kicks in. So I guess to, you know, to sum it up, I'm, I'm not prepared to make that recommendation to you tonight. But I, I certainly, uh, understand, I think it's a, a, a good thing that Jamie has brought this up. Um, I, I've said this before, I've said it, I'll say it again. I, I don't think we ought to be, uh, complacent about any of this stuff. I think we, we need to continually review and inspect what we're doing. And so I, I'm, I'm, I'm really open to the conversation. But, uh, right now, at this point, I'm not, I'm not prepared to make that recommendation. Oh, sure.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate that update. Suzie, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I think there's just a couple of data points I probably want to know as well. Just, um, uh, first, um, what are the other preschools in town? Um, what are their policies right now? It's just important, it's just, you know, information to know. And then how many, um, have we had any active, um, COVID cases in pre K? Those are my two questions upfront.
Thank you, Suzie. I just, I, I get that if there are, you know, certainly committing to that ongoing review of this. If there's other information relative to preschool masking, um, you know, be more than happy to bring that back to you at your next meeting. So I, I, I've added those two things to the list and we'll get you that information. And if there's anything else that would be helpful, let us know.
Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I, 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 I get that we want to review this and do that. Um, and I, I feel like whenever we made the decision back, whenever the Board of Health was on, um, the, the, wh- what happened was very hastily done, um, in my opinion. Um, so we had recommended, um, uh, to say to the Board of Health, go back, include the pre K within this. Um, he gave his, and they, the Board of Health gave their opinion during our meeting. And we took that as almost like their vote, I guess, and said that, okay, we're going to include pre K. It's kind of the way it all went down. Um, the Board of Health was going on vacation, so they weren't able to meet the following week. So we ended up making a decision in the middle of this meeting. Um, in hindsight, right, wrong or indifferent, I, I kind of look at this as, if it's wrong, it's wrong. I mean, why are we waiting? I mean, I, I can't imagine a child in, in pre K. And I'm not an educator, but I can say that I coach enough kids that if you have a kid that has a speech delay, that has a issue with learning, social, emotional, why are we masking pre K kids if we don't need to? The parent can choose if they want to keep them in a mask to make sure they don't get caught up in a contact tracing. It's their choice. Um, I would just say that I, I, I work, i- if there's something wrong, you fix it today. You don't wait a week, uh, especially with a group that is susceptible. Similar to the group, uh, Marty, back whenever we, you know, during the beginning of the pandemic, we had a lot of our learners who were, you know, struggling and those that needed extra help. We made a decision in the meeting and we kind of turned and made sure that those who were on an I E P, certain I E Ps, I won't say all, but certain, uh, children within our district who had those needs, uh, we changed because we weren't doing it right. Um, I would say this may fit into that same mold, uh, from my opinion. But I, I don't have a child in that program. I, I just kind of look at it as a parent saying, yeah, it's, it, it doesn't seem right to me. So.
Thank you, Jamie. Bronwyn, I think you had your hand up. Is that right?
Yes, thank you. Um, I agree with Jamie. Um, I think when we voted on this in August, this is something that, um, I didn't think was a great idea to begin with. Um, the Board of Health didn't vote on it. Uh, D E didn't, uh, didn't vote yes for it. D E didn't vote yes for it, just a strong recommendation. So the fact that they didn't take that step, to me, was indicative of a lot of the things that Ms. Hastings was mentioning, you know, in order for the kids to, uh, recognize, identify, things like that. Then wearing a mask prohibits them from doing a lot of those skills. And it's already November ninth. So I'm thinking if we keep pushing it off and pushing it off, it's already been a couple of months. And as Jamie mentioned, if there's parents that choose to still have their student wear a mask, hundred percent their choice. It's just that it wouldn't be a mandate, just like it wasn't a mandate from the Board of Health and it wasn't a mandate from the early childhood for D E. So I think that, um, it definitely makes sense to allow these children to have the opportunity to learn at their best. I'm sure the teachers are doing a great job and taking them outside and doing everything they can. I'm sure they are, but I don't think that this is allowing them to reach their goals as, as they could.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Nicole?
Thank you. Um, it's good to hear back on what is going on so far with the pre K population. I appreciate kind of the update on how that's been working out so far this year. Um, and just wanted to add into that, that the, um, most recent guidance that we have from the A A P, um, whose focus is also on ensuring that we continue in-person learning as much as possible, um, that the American Academy of Pediatrics, as recently as November second, continues to say that all students older than two years and all school staff should wear face masks at school regardless of vaccination status. And their recommendation continues to be for universal masking at this time. So knowing that, I know that we've also adjusted our, um, policy regarding face masks um, to be kind of in accordance with that, to allow for customized considerations for students as needed. And I hope that we are continuing to meet that obligation for students who might have needs that make traditional masking a little bit more difficult. But just to, um, bring to mind or bring to the front of the conversation that recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, let's go Suzie and then Bronwyn.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole. I think that's, um, helpful. And so another piece of data, Dr. O'Shea, is perhaps you can give us a breakdown of, and, and, you know, within the, within the purview of, we don't want to break any students confidentiality, obviously. But maybe you could give us an idea of how many, um, you know, special accommodations have already been made for students not to wear masks in pre K that might just give us some data to know, um, how many students are not masked already because of, of a need that's been identified.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to, I think we need to be careful, um, if we start picking and choosing, uh, who we're going to listen to. Um, if, if the American Academy of Pediatrics is saying that everyone over the age of two and all staff, students regardless of age or vaccination status should remain masked at all times. And we just voted seven zero to ask D E if our high school students and teachers that are vaccinated can unmask. It just doesn't, the rationale doesn't match up.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Uh, Nicole, go ahead.
Just for, um, clarifying, to be sure that we're on the same page. Um, my understanding is that the vote that we took was to send those numbers to D E to begin the attestation process. That would still need to come back to us to actually vote on if we agreed to remove a mask mandate within the schools.
All right, yeah, Nicole, absolutely. Um, we, the vote we just took has no impact on the mask policy. The mask policy remains in effect. Until we get approval from D E, we can't change the mask policy. Absolutely. Um, and, and Nicole, I'm just curious, were you reading from the note from Dr. Tapper?
I was not, but I did see that as well in our notes from today.
Cause, cause I know that, that came up, somebody brought that up and, and Dr. Tapper did send a note to us uh, in which I'm pretty sure she said exactly what you said, Marty. Am I getting that?
It might be a quote. I was on the A A P website directly.
Yeah. Did I get that?
The, uh, the advisory from Dr. Tapper is in your, in your packet. Um, where she cites the A A P guidance, uh, but she also cites the AAP guidance, uh, but she also qualifies, uh, some of the reasons, you know, in other words, she she offers some commentary where one of the reasons the AAP stands by its recommendation is the the signi- a significant portion of the student population is not yet vaccinated. And so she she acknowledges that the eighty percent is significant, uh, in in our case. So she she's kind of recognizing that there's the AAP guidance that she has indicated that she would stand by, but she also, uh, offers some qualifications on some of the some of their reasons. So she she acknowledges that that eighty percent threshold is is very high and might be a a reason to modify the AAP approach, I guess.
Thank you, Marty. Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, damn, Marty, that's exactly kind of the way I was going is, I mean, she, they're a part of the Board of Health. The Board of Health is yet to say and take a vote on it, uh, from everything I've read from the Board of Health, you know, that they expect kids pre-K to be wearing a mask. So if they felt that great about it, they should have taken a vote, which they still have not done. Um, and I I kind of agree with Brownman. You got to kind of stay, you know, aligned with who are we following? Jesse? And, you know, the Board of Health, or are we following, you know, one of the members of the Board of Health? Parts of it, they're not voting. So I I just want to be consistent about our approach and, you know, I completely agree that we just voted seven zero on that. We did not vote on the mask. But we just told Marty to go spend a bunch of his time on getting rid of the masks for the high schools. So if we didn't agree with that, we probably shouldn't have been voting yes, uh, for it, um, in my opinion, so.
And and just, thank you, Jamie. Just to be clear, Dr. Tapper is not on the Board of Health. Right? She's our consulting physician. And so I just, again, I I know it's similar, but it but it is different, right? And so just to make sure we're clear on that. Other comments or questions at this point? So I I think we have two ways forward. It sounds like we are giving Marty a bunch of stuff to do, not only on the high school, but also on the pre-K issue. Um, and our next item is to schedule a meeting for next week. So we could say we want to take up both of these things next week. It is also within any member's prerogative to propose a motion right now. Um, so it's completely up to what the committee wants to do. Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to propose a motion right now specifically on the pre-K.
So do you do you have a motion you would like to propose?
High, high move to remove the face rash requirement for pre-K for the town of Long Mellow Schools.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion?
I don't, oh, sorry, Kevin.
Gianna, go ahead.
As a social emotional educator for preschool children, and and I I agree that this, you know, and again, I appreciate Jessica because she's a great advocate for this population. I don't feel prepared tonight to make a vote on removing the mask policy for, um, preschool children. I think it would be fair if we had time to think about this, talk to some people, do some more research, and then come back on the eighteenth and make the vote then.
Thank you, Gianna. Other comments?
Yeah.
Jamie, go ahead.
Yep, one other comment. I mean, I I I appreciate it, Jamie. I completely understand your feeling, obviously, it's quick, but I can tell you, whenever we put this into place, it was quicker and it was with, uh, less information, is without a vote by the governing body of our town that made an adjustment to the way we were supposed to be handling masks. So I I I don't, I I get it. I I know how you're feeling, but, you know, the reality is is this is no quicker than what happened from the onset of it. So I just think it's it's fixing something that, um, I think, you know, may need to be fixed.
Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie. I, um, it, I kind of want to go back a little bit in terms of when we went into the meeting, when we heard about the Board of Health, um, decision, I had already been been basing my thoughts on the fact that the AAP, the CDC, and Desi at that time were strongly recommending. I know they weren't mandating for two and older, but strongly recommending. So the Board of Health was just like an added thing, that kind of, you know, um, but, uh, that's three major bodies of people, you know, and and last year we were told, you have to listen to the AAP, you have to listen to CDC, you have to listen to Desi. So I went into that meeting like, okay, now AAP, CDC, and Desi are strongly recommending. Um, and so the Board of Health was just kind of a just kind of got thrown in there. Um, you know, again, I I I work with this population. I understand. I want to, you know, I want to advocate for them as well in addition to like Jessica and the others. But tonight I wouldn't be able to say I wouldn't be able to say with, you know, all certainty, one way or the other.
Thank you, Gianna. Mary?
Well, throughout my time on the school committee, I've been reminded by people on both sides of the masking issue that I am not a health professional. So I'm going to really just look at this through the educational lens, which is that if we were to vote, that would go into effect like right now, right? So tomorrow we would have a differentiated masking policy. And as an educator, it's difficult for me to imagine a transition like that taking place at seven forty-five PM and being ready for students in the morning. So I would think that from the educator lens, there should be some planning about how that would go into effect and be communicated to families. So I just want to put that out there that I'm I'm not commenting specifically about the health portion of this conversation. I'm thinking about this as a school-based decision in terms of what teachers and community members can expect, because this is a a big change from what the current policy is.
Brownman, go ahead.
I totally understand what you're saying, Mary, and I think that would be very difficult. If we put that in place for tomorrow morning, I think if we could maybe amend the motion and, um, say that, um, as of maybe, I don't know what the date is, next Monday, that at least gives a little time, but it's not waiting until next week to vote. I think maybe we're meeting, we're meeting Thursday next week. Then they only have one day. So I do understand what you're saying and agree with it. But if I could amend the motion and say that we, um, make that effective Monday, November?
Fifteenth?
Fifteenth. Thank you, Kevin.
Right, so Brownman has proposed an amendment to the motion. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? So this is not the motion, it's just the amendment to add the implementation date to Jamie's original motion. Uh, so I guess I I would want to throw it to Marty. Um, Marty, could you just comment on if we pass this and we say that we are going to revise the mask policy for implementation on Monday, the fifteenth, does that give you and your staff the time to do what you need to do, um, to implement this effectively?
This is a a a level of education that we're going to have to put out there to families, how it's going to work and and, um, I think it's it's probably just a matter of announcing it, explaining, um, what the implications of being unmasked would be potentially, um, how it doesn't reflect the change to the COVID protocols. But I I think we I think we probably could pull it off for Monday. I I I appreciate what Mary said. I I think to implement it tomorrow morning would have been that would have been chaotic for us. And I think Monday probably gives us the the time we need, but you know, Sue, I don't know if there's anything that that you're thinking about. Excuse me.
I'm thinking about, um, giving parents time to wrap themselves around this. Remember, nobody in this preschool will be vaccinated. They're not eligible for the vaccine. So, it's a a preschool where parents pay to have their students come to school in in most cases or many cases. And I I suppose there's potential for those parents not to agree with, uh, unmasking students and to pull their students out. So I I just want to give everybody ample time to think about that. And we have PD Day and Veterans Day. And so it's not, you know, five days between now and Monday. It's really just a couple. So, you know, I think it's quick, but.
I think you make a good point about the the students that tuition into the program. And giving that, excuse me, I'm losing my voice for some reason. Uh, but students that 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 tuition into the program, we we probably would really owe it to them to sort of gauge, um, their receptivity to this and would it diminish potentially the number of peer, regular ed peer role models that access that program? So it's a type of thing that sometimes when we, you know, when we have the advantage of a little bit of time to, if if this is your intention to remove the the preschool mask mandate, to give us a little bit of time to think about implications, there might be things that when we talk to the staff that even Sue and I haven't thought about tonight, Sue's very familiar with the program. So that, that's a really good point, though, about the the tuitioning thing. That, again, totally within the purview of the committee. Sometimes there are unintended consequences that, uh, to votes like this that, um, sometimes we need a little bit of time to to think it through and to talk to the folks on the ground and the families that are that have children enrolled there. All families, yeah.
So Jessica, I I recognize that you want to make a comment, but you're, that's not how the committee works. So you had your shot and that's not how the committee works. So I just want to make that clear. Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Um, yes, uh, thank you. I I I I'm going to say that, you know, I've heard from a lot of people, we've heard, we've heard from a lot of people that the uh, masks at the pre-K level are, you know, a challenge. Um, certainly, one of the concerns we have is the social emotional component and as well as the, um, the, uh, speech, uh, development, especially for those students who require it. So that's that's something that I I've brought up continually throughout this. And I think, um, while I'm very much leaning towards the idea of, um, removing the requirement, I'd like to at least give the time, um, for the superintendent to come back with a recommendation. Um, and to, you know, just have us have all that information out on the table. I think given that the eleventh is a a a holiday, um, for the district and that therefore nobody's actually working at that time. And also, uh, the twelfth is a PD day, so everybody's focused on that. You know, will, could we just, you know, push this vote off to, um, the eighteenth? And that will give us time to implement it, you know, for a few days before, um, the Thanksgiving break or, you know, I I I don't know. I I know nobody wants to wait. I get that. I understand that that some people really want this done today. And I'm I'm in agreement that it needs to, it needs to happen. But I'd like, I think we need to give the superintendent, and again, going on Mary's comment around, we are not the health experts, so we're looking at it from an educational perspective, give the superintendent, um, an opportunity to actually weigh in on it with more information. And that, and whatever, you know, that that's my two cents on it, but I'm I'm in agreement that it needs to move forward, but I'd like to do it in a in a way that gives us more information, uh, and more time for the superintendent to get, excuse me, some things set up.
Brownman, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Marty, respectfully, I don't think, um, I'm I'm not in favor of only of you only asking the parents who pay how they feel about masking. I think that you, in my opinion, I would ask either everyone or no one.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the chance to clarify that certainly our intention would be to talk to all families about it, but I I think there are, there, yeah, uh, for sure. Thanks for that clarification. That makes a lot of sense.
And how many families or how many students?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Brownman, keep going, go. I'm sorry.
I was just wondering how many students are in the pre-K?
I do not have that information, Tom, or uh, Mr. Maz is telling me about seventy, seventy students.
Okay, thanks. Um, there's just two things that make me feel, uh, confident. Of course, no, uh, decision is ever perfect. But two things that make me feel confident are that, um, if we did pass this and implement it for Monday, the the parents still have the choice to mask, uh, their child. And the staff still has the choice to, uh, stay masked as well. The other thing that makes me, um, feel confident is the test and stay program. It's been working phenomenally well and it's kept a lot of students in school and would hopefully do, um, the same thing at at pre-K at all levels. So those two things do, um, you know, provide me with with confidence in it.
Thank you, Brownman. Uh, let's do Mary and then we'll go to Jamie.
Just curious if you are going to seek feedback from only the pre-K, because these kids are with other kids, is what I'm understanding, who are not in the pre-K program, integrated throughout the school day with these children, or are they separate? Because my understanding would be that every other student in the building and every teacher in the building would be masked. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct, yeah. Jamie, go ahead.
Yep, and and I I I just want this on the books. So if we hit the twenty-second is what you need, take the twenty-second if we need to amend the motion. I mean, it's more about getting a plan out there and showing that we're moving towards something and fixing something that in my personal opinion, noneducator or health, um, isn't right. So that's all I I want to just make sure we're moving towards that. So if we need to go to the twenty-second, go to the twenty-second. I just don't think we need to wait another week and kind of get caught up in it. It's hard to get all of us together and then we're a week behind, you know, if we're going to say twenty-second, let's just get it done now so we all know what we're working towards.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, so just a reminder of what we're talking about. Uh, we're talking about the amendment to the original motion. Right? So we still have to vote on the amendment and we have to vote on the motion. I will give you my take, which is if this were a standalone preschool that was not in the middle of an elementary school, I think it'd be a much easier decision. I agree with what we've heard from Suzie and others that I think it, we need to give Marty, Sue, and the rest of the folks involved in this time to weigh in. And since we are just about to come to an agenda item to put a meeting on the eighteenth, I think it would be much easier for us to have an informed discussion on the eighteenth than to make this decision right now. That's my opinion. Anybody else want to weigh in on the amendment to the motion? Okay, so what we're voting on right now is, do we want to amend the motion to revise the mask mandate for preschool to add implementation on the fifteenth? Right? Other questions on what we're voting on? Okay, so again, we're voting on the amendment. Okay, Nicole?
I'm sorry, just.
Sure, yeah.
We're just voting on if the amendment for the fifteenth.
Yeah, so here's, let me just try and be clearer. So if we vote yes, Jamie's amendment, Jamie's motion will then be amended to say we will revise the mask policy to implement on the fifteenth. If we vote no, Jamie's motion will stand as we're going to revise the mask policy right now. That, everybody? Is that, everybody good with that? Okay, all right, Nicole.
No.
Gianna.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And yes for me, so that passes six to one, so now. We have a motion that has been amended. So that the pre K mask policy change, if we pass it, will be implemented on the on Monday, November fifteenth. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Mary, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. If the committee votes no, we could still have a motion next week on the eighteenth. To remove the masking policy, so we're only voting right now on the fifteenth.
I I agree with that completely. Does Diane agree with that?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
But Diane, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Additional comments on the revised motion? Gianna.
I I just wanted to to, you know, make it clear um. That I was speaking as an educator and as somebody who loves, you know, children in my school and children in my middle public schools. And I was not trying to pass myself off as a health expert. Um, that's why I mentioned that I had originally been thinking uh from the guidance from AAP, CDC and DESI. So I just wanted to, you know, apologize if I seemed like I was thinking that I knew more than the health experts, I don't, obviously. Um, but I am a solid educator, um social emotional with preschool students. Um, and uh, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Gianna, all of us uh who serve with you on the committee know how uh deeply you take. Your social emotional well being of our children, so and we greatly appreciate that, thank you. Mary, go ahead.
I just wanna reiterate one more time, especially for those on the poll like us who are anxious. To have this policy updated that um. In the educational world with a holiday and a professional development day. I personally feel that making that change for the fifteenth is a quick thing for administration. And I look forward to revisiting this next week if that's the way the committee votes.
Okay, so again, just to reiterate what we are voting on here, we're voting on. The motion to revise the mask policy. For implementation on November fifteenth for the pre K program. And if we vote yes, then masks will be optional. We vote no, the mask policy will remain what it is, which is masks will be mandatory. Right, any questions on that? And again, if we vote no. I think Marty has already said that he will bring back to us more information. And a motion, possible motion on this for our next meeting, which we will hopefully decide in a moment to have next week. Marty, is that a, are you comfortable with that statement?
Yep, that's my understanding.
So Marty just said yes, that is his understanding, okay, so I think we are ready to vote. Uh, Nicole.
No.
Gianna.
No.
Mary.
No.
Suzie.
No.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And no, so fails five to two, so the mask policy remains in effect. For the pre K and we will look forward to um more information and possible motion at our next meeting. Okay, so our next agenda item is the school committee schedule of meetings. So we're hoping to uh put in place a meeting on the eighteenth, so next week. Uh, where we will focus on revisions to the mask policy. If DESI approves our attestation, then we can talk about the high school mask policy and we can also talk about the pre K mask policy. Marty, do you wanna speak to that at all or is it as clear as it's written on our agenda?
Uh, clear to me, if there's additional clarification that anyone needs, I'm I'm happy to weigh in, but that what you described makes sense.
Jamie, go ahead.
Yeah, I I'm not available on the eighteenth and now that we've added all that to the eighteenth, I'd prefer to be there.
So then let's figure out when we can have this meeting, I know Nicole, you had said that was not a great date for you either.
Unfortunately, I have a school obligation that I cannot reschedule that night.
All right, so um let's see if we can figure out when we can meet next week. So everybody grab your calendars. Um, I know it will not be on Monday. Um, so I think we're looking at either Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. Um, Marty, do you wanna weigh in on? Other possibilities that you think will work if Thursday is not gonna work?
Just checking the district calendar. Diane is got a good handle on this as well, but I don't see any reason. Why you couldn't meet on the sixteenth or the seventeenth, the only. Snag would be if we don't hear back from DESI, but I think if uh. You know, I'd I'd be happy to press them for an answer, if if Tuesday turns out to be the night that makes sense to you. I would do everything in my power to squeeze them to get them to turn around the uh the attestation. Their their guidance online says two days. When I talk to some folks, they'll say two to five days, so that's why we were thinking initially Thursday, but I I. I think if we if we squeeze them, I think we could get it to you by Tuesday. You may not not know until Tuesday morning, but it's just a simple yes or no, it's not like it's any additional information that you need to read, so.
Yeah, no, thank you, Marty, and I think it's important for folks to understand that was why we were targeting Thursday, which was to give DESI time to turn it around, but. You know, uh, like Marty said, hopefully they can do that, and again, I think one of the only wrinkles. Is that there's a holiday coming up later this week, which could make it a little bit more challenging to get that back to us quickly, so. Um, yeah, so I think I would potentially say, why don't we? If we could do it Wednesday, that would give folks a little bit more time. Um, Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, Mary and I both have an LPV EC meeting on Wednesday.
Which is funny, cuz I just saw Mary's.
Sorry about that.
Not to add more links to the calendar, but there are also some end of season um sports events happening on the Tuesday night. I don't know if any other parents are also.
So. Yeah, so uh as as we always find out when we try to schedule emergency meetings, um, not surprisingly, we all are busy. Um, so. Um, what to do? Um, so it sounds like Tuesday, there are some potential sports conflicts and Wednesday, the LPV EC is a conflict, uh Jamie, go ahead.
I mean, it it, did we already say Monday wasn't an option? Or it was just?
Monday, Monday, we're nervous we're not gonna hear back from DESI and we also have a middle school forum already scheduled on Monday.
Got it, is it, is it, is it that big of a worry, Marty, cuz if we did the, if we if we ended up saying that once we get. I mean, do we really need their feedback before we vote on it? It can be additional?
Yeah, that that's up to you, uh what what sort of feedback you're looking for, the other part of this is pulling together a plan for. Uh, the high school. If you choose to access the high school off ramp, so that actually is a little more labor intensive. Um, I wonder, I don't know what's on the LPVC agenda Wednesday night, um. Or what the timing of that meeting is, maybe I wonder if we can play with the. Timing of that meeting relative to the timing of the of a potential school committee meeting on on uh Wednesday. But if if it has to be Tuesday, we'll make it work, you know, I I I definitely. Understand the urgency of this and I understand that we wanna bring it to a head for sure, so.
Yeah, and and to your point, Marty, I I think we can uh we can start the meeting at a time that would work for the members, uh. You know, if a six thirty start doesn't work and we need to do it seven thirty, we can do that if. Maybe if folks could make a five thirty start work, I don't know, I mean, I think we can be flexible with uh how we do this, so I guess let's pursue the LPV EC question first. Um, Bronwyn or Mary, do you wanna speak to when that meeting is and if we could do both of those on the same night, Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, it says that uh the meeting is at six o'clock. Um, and. Mary, I don't know if they they mentioned this. Uh Marty, is it okay if I read an email? I mean, that's public record, right?
Marty, you're muted.
Sorry, relative to the timing of the meeting, I I and the agenda items and.
An agenda item?
Sure, yeah.
That's okay?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Okay. Um, this came out October fifth, that we'd meet uh both boards on the seventeenth at six. Because it says the president um. Of the board resigned, we need to elect a new president and add that member to the bank documents as a signature on that account. Um. So I I don't, I don't know, Mary, I don't know if you guys discussed that at all, I don't know if. I mean, they they could probably do that without us. I'm I'm pretty confident.
But and and Bronwyn, we could easily have our meeting at seven, um and then you could have an hour for the LPVC meeting if we wanted to stagger the meeting time.
Okay, and we could tell Roland or the, I forget who sent the email, um I don't know if he's running the meeting. Um, maybe tell him ahead of time that uh Mary and I have a meeting at seven. So that we would need to, um usually their meetings are pretty quick. So I I don't think that's a problem, but. Mary or I'll notify them about this um newly scheduled school committee meeting. And that gives the state an extra day and admin an extra day. And it, and if everybody could be there, that's even even better. So that's a good idea, Kevin, thanks.
You're welcome, Mary, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Um, so I guess then the question is for the rest of the the folks, does seven o'clock work, I mean, the thumbs up from Jamie, thumbs up Nicole. Gianna. Suzie, was that a? Thank you.
I will, I will reschedule.
As always, thank you, Suzie, um Marty, Sue, Tom. Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus, then we will meet next Wednesday at seven o'clock. Excellent, and uh and I appreciate the committee's flexibility on this. Uh, I know we did a lot of this last year where we would, we would add bonus meetings and uh so. We'll continue that tradition next week, so thank you to everybody for making that possible. Um, okay, Nicole, yes.
Sorry, better if I unmute, um you might be about to go there, but in case you were moving forward, um I think part of that was also questioning if we wanted to move the meeting from the twenty third to the thirtieth? Yes, all right, awesome.
Thank you, I will turn the gavel over to you. So, uh, yeah, that was brought up last time that we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty third, several members said. That was really a bad time to schedule a meeting and so we were gonna push that back. To the thirtieth and that will put us in line after Thanksgiving so that we have a meeting every other week after Thanksgiving, so. Uh, is there any? Any problem with committee members if we make that change, so cancel the twenty third and reschedule that on the thirtieth. So again, Tuesday before Thanksgiving moved to the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. It looks like we are in agreement with that, excellent. Okay, so again, we just scheduled a meeting for next Wednesday. And then the meeting after that will be a regularly scheduled meeting on November thirtieth. Beautiful, all right, well done. Uh, and then the final note uh in that meeting schedule portion of the agenda. Is that we got a note from the select board that on December sixth, there is a joint meeting. With the school committee, the finance committee and the select board to talk about budget assumptions, directives, goals and the budget calendar, and again, that. Came through last week, hopefully folks have that on their calendar as well. Um, this is an annual meeting where all three boards get together to talk about all things budget, so. That's just an FYI, uh the select board essentially said be there, so there we go. Any comments or questions on any of the scheduling issues?
I'm sorry.
Yep, Suzie, go ahead.
Do we know the time for the meeting on the sixth? Is it at seven?
Good question, um, let me see if I wrote that. I have it down at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on scheduling? All right, um, next up is the Long Meadow District Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Council, I'll turn it over to Marty.
All right, so. We had um. So I'm coming from a a a variety of places that there uh seem to be an interest in having a. Standing advisory council uh focused on. Issues relating to diversity, equity and inclusion. And so that, I think the 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 need for that, the call for that. Uh, comes from the findings of the equity audit. It uh came from some feedback that we received when we had our administrative school council retreat. Um, a couple of months ago and also it was some feedback that I had received through the, you know, as I was putting together my my annual plan and so. My uh hope is to establish a a twelve person advisory council. And the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is I would uh invite uh participation from the school committee and so. The 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 twelve person roster would include school committee members. Uh administrators, staff from each level, parents from each level and students from the middle school and the high school. As as I see it, this uh advisory council would serve to. Uh monitor our fidelity to the goals of the equity audit and the goals of our district improvement plan. Uh, and that I also, one of the things that I think we've heard. Uh regularly is the importance of having a mechanism for feedback and so. We we did a lot of work through the equity audit, conducting sort of listening sessions. Uh, we did that through empathy interviews and through uh qualitative surveys and focus groups and that kind of thing. And that was really valuable to us administratively is to, you know, have that as a mechanism to gather feedback about. People's experiences in Long Meadow Public Schools and so. Uh, that this advisory council, the way I see it, would also serve that function on a more regular basis, that it would be a a way for. Uh, to a way to collect uh community feedback, a way to. Understand the experiences of of all community members and so. Uh, I would invite committee participation on this, I was thinking to myself that, you know. Like you're all busy, you're all stretched onto a number of subcommittees. Uh, and we have got a lot on your plate this year, negotiations, uh certainly COVID decisions. I'm wondering if the committee would prefer to have sort of a uh a permanent member of this advisory council or would you rather? Sort of keep it open and and have committee members be represented based on their availability and their schedule. And then we could make it a report out to the to the school committee at your meeting, so. I'm just trying to be mindful of your of your schedules and and knowing that you you all have a lot going on, so. Uh, as we get this advisory council off the ground. Um, I would really welcome your your participation and involvement in that. Um, I think that the group would also, in addition to monitoring progress, in addition to being a. A mechanism for feedback, I see it as a as a council that would advise on potential future. a mechanism for feedback, I see it as a, as a council that would advise on potential future directions. Uh, and so that's the, that's the advisory council that, that we, um, are committed to. It is, um, I've, I've restated it in my annual plan. Uh, it definitely came from some feedback from, from the committee. So I guess, uh, would, would welcome your involvement, but how you involve yourselves as a committee is, is up to you, whether you want to do it on sort of a as, as needed, as available basis, or you assign a, a, a committee member to that advisory council is, is up to you.
Thank you, Marty. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin, and thanks Superintendent for putting this together. I, um, I, I really loved being on the KLE and, uh, you know, I can't speak for Nicole, but, you know, um, I'm, she's shaking her head, so she enjoyed it too. Um, but I love the option of kind of, if other people want to, you know, go when they can, I'd love to be able to go when I, when I'm available. So I would, you know, I would like that option. I think that's a great option and I appreciate you offering it.
Nicole?
Yeah, I would echo what Gianna said. Um, I also absolutely was honored and very much enjoyed my time on that KLE committee, but also know that there are several committee members who might really welcome the chance to be able to get involved on that as well. And this might be a good way for more of us to be able to be a part of that process if, if that seems like it's something that would work out.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Uh, Marty, so are you saying like it would be a rotation? Um, like just one person would go or like if, like if people were available or interested, they could go?
I think my, my intention.
Then it might turn into everyone there.
Right, yeah, right. Uh, my intention would be to let the committee know of, uh, meeting dates and, uh, to check in on availability and um, I, I'm trying to keep it at about twelve members just to make it manageable and participatory. So I, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't preclude, uh, two committee members from attending a meeting, uh, you know, if, if there couldn't be any agreement on that. But I think what I'm, what I'm targeting would be just a single committee member, you know, sort of first come, first served. But, you know, the door would be open.
I think that makes sense, uh, especially based on what Gianna and Nicole said. And like you said, people can do a, a report back uh, to the whole committee.
Susie?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. Um, I think, you know, like to be involved, but can't fully commit. So that would be great.
So it, it sounds like, um, we're going to have a school committee representative on that committee task force, council, advisory council. We will have a school committee member, but it doesn't have to be the same member.
Correct.
And I think the only thing I would say is I think we have to commit to it being a member, not, or none of us can go. Right? So I, I think, I love the idea of each of us having a shot to go. But hopefully we can collectively commit to making sure somebody goes to the meeting so that the school committee is represented.
Politely nudge and request and arm twist.
Excellent.
I'll have Diane do it.
And I guess, so I, I'm glad that we have that, um, that settled. And I guess I'm curious if people have additional comments or questions related to the advisory council beyond just the, the school leadership.
Um, thank you very much for getting this underway. I know this is something we've talked about for a bit, trying to get that council up and running. Um, and I really appreciate taking the time to put that together. Do you have any further details about the makeup of the council or when the first meeting or roughly when the first meetings might be planned for?
Uh, I, I probably would shoot for, uh, early December to get it up and running, uh, wait till after the Thanksgiving holiday and uh, the membership as I'm mentioning it right now would be school committee, superintendent, assistant superintendent, uh, another, uh, LPS administrator, uh, staff, one from each level, parent, one from each level, and then, uh, student, one middle school student, one high school student.
Yeah, and, and Marty, I think this looks great and, and I really hope that you have, uh, a lot of enthusiasm from those various constituencies for being involved in this. Cause I mean, this is work that all of us care deeply about and, and is ongoing work in town and in the schools. And, uh, and thank you for your leadership in making this happen. Cause this is important work that we've been doing for a while and it, and it needs to continue. So thank you for doing that. Alright, I'm going to move us along to new business. Uh, and we will continue with Marty, uh, and the superintendent's annual plan.
The opportunity to meet with the, um, evaluation subcommittee last week and we, uh, went through the annual plan. And just as a reminder and a refresher perhaps to folks at home, uh, like every educator in Long Meadow Public Schools, I'm expected to put together uh, a plan against which, uh, I would be evaluated. And so like every educator, I'm expected to present a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. And so I will share the screen and, and just sort of briefly describe the, the plan and welcome any feedback or questions that you might have. So, one second. Alright, so, uh, my, my strong firm intention here is to ensure that this plan tightly aligns with, uh, school committee goals, with our new district improvement plan and emerging, uh, school improvement plans as well. So the, the professional practice goal, as you can see here, indicates that lead the development of uh, district and school improvement plans, uh, facilities, educational offering, schedules and assessment practices aligned with the vision of graduate and meeting the needs of twenty-first century learners. And so the, the, the first action step that you see here is, is largely been, uh, a, a focus of mine since, uh, since July really, and that is uh, pulling together a, a comprehensive district improvement plan. So we were, we were successful in that, you know, following a, a period of, of feedback gathering and, and, uh, uh, administrative retreats, school committee retreats, et cetera, et cetera. Second goal relates to the MSBA and, and really broadening support for that project and, and, uh, really being purposeful and, and trying frankly to get the attention of the MSBA. And uh, I know that's something that, that this committee is equally interested in as well. Uh, again, alignment. Number four relates to the, uh, the challenge success survey. That's a survey that the school committee had authorized last year. So at some point we'll have, we'll have to find the right time to administer that survey, uh, at the high school. And then beyond that, um, really using what, uh, influence I might have in terms of communicating to the community, uh, and to our staff around uh, the, the VOG competencies and, and those demonstrations of learning that, that show that commitment. Uh, and then number seven relates to the work of the curriculum subcommittee over the last, uh, several meetings. And that is ensuring that we have schedules and programs that line up with the needs of students in the twenty-first century. The, uh, the, the second component is the student learning goal. And it's reflective of our commitment to MTSS. It's reflective of our commitment to, um, uh, universal design and making that a framework for, uh, unit plans, lesson plans in the years ahead. And number two, I, I, I really chose the words carefully, uh, but in, in terms of our commitment to, uh, inclusion and equity, ensuring that we are looking at through that, through a series of lenses, whether it relates to staffing, whether it relates to, uh, administrative capacity, uh, uh, curriculum revisions, policy, et cetera. So looking, making sure that we're committed on a number of fronts uh, to the, the goals relating to inclusion and equity. And then finally, um, you know, leveraging, uh, educator evaluation to improve student learning. And, and really that, part of that work is rolling up our sleeves as administrators and ensuring that we are being purposeful with the way we are using the evaluation framework. So uh, those are the, the student learning goals. And then the third component are the district goals, which you're already familiar with and which we've talked about in recent meetings. So uh, happy to answer any questions you might have. We had some really lengthy, interesting conversations with the evaluation subcommittee and appreciated the the feedback and clarity that, that they provided as well.
Thank you, Marty. Comments or questions for Marty? Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you Superintendent for putting together this plan and, uh, for your strategic alignment. I just had two, um, questions for your consideration.
Sure.
Um, um, under component one, number one, where you're talking about multi-tiered systems of support framework. Um, I'm a visual learner and I know a bunch of people who are visual learners, um, and I work with MTSS. I'm just wondering if there's any way you could put, um, multi-tiered systems of support framework that involves academic, social, emotional, just so those words are in there so everybody knows what MTSS is.
Meaning the actual MTSS vis- visual to embed that in this plan? Is that what you mean or, or more?
Doesn't even have to be the, I mean, the visual is fine if you want to, but I mean, even the visual might be too much for, you know, I, I'm just thinking you just want people to know that it's, it supports academics, it supports social, emotional behavioral, um, so even if you just throw those words in there somehow.
Thank you, Gianna.
And I had one more. Uh, and then Superintendent on the back on component number two. Under number two. Um, and I, I think I've maybe mentioned this before, but, um, given that we just talked about the district diversity, equity and inclusion advisory council, and given that I'm the representative for SEAL, I would love for you to consider changing anti-racist to diverse. Anti-racist is limiting, diverse and captures all of our diverse population.
Thank you, Gianna. Additional comments or questions? I am seeing Nicole.
I'm wondering if, um, to Gianna's last point, if maybe we could include diversity instead of replace um, anti-racist to maybe say, um, commits to inclusive, diverse, anti-racist and identity-based, just to keep that component standing alone.
Thank you, Nicole. Marty, you good with that?
Yeah, I guess I'd look for guidance from the committee, whether, you know, we're, your, those are considered friendly changes. So if, if that's the case, I'd certainly change it the way Nicole described. Yeah.
Susie?
Yeah, I, um, I think this, uh, I think the wording suggestions are fine. I think it's important to note, this is the superintendent's annual plan. This will guide him. So while we'll be, um, yes, while we will be voting on it, I just want to make sure from his perspective that this is, you know, these are changes that, um, you know, kind of meet the, the intent of the individual, um, action items as, as you've outlined. Not, I'm not questioning the wording. It's just simply that I want to make sure that they don't shift intent of his, uh, original plan.
No, I, I, I think the, I think the way Nicole, um, nuanced the suggestion from Gianna, that, that makes sense to me. I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that. But I appreciate it, the, the way and this is the process that we go through with educators. They, they, they bring goals to us and, and we have those uh, conversations back and forth about, okay, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? But ultimately, as you say, it is the educator's plan. But
Right.
But that, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with changing it the way Nicole described. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think, um, if I could just continue, it's important to note that, um, you know, the evaluation subcommittee, a couple of us, um, met with the superintendent and reviewed all of these and, and he went through them in, in pretty big detail. So, um, we're supportive of, of how they're written and any changes that, um, we, uh, would like to include, incorporate.
Thank you, Susie. Any more comments or questions for Marty? Alright, we have a possible motion?
I move the school committee approve the annual plan twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for Superintendent M. Martin O'Shea as amended?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will come to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Mary? Susie?
Yes, yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yeah.
And yes for me. Thank you, Marty. And it looks like we have come to a possible motion to move to executive session.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H and Purpose Seven. Consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meeting to not reconvene into open session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Again, this is to not reconvene into open session. Uh, we will do a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, so this concludes the regular session of the Long Meadow School Committee Meeting. Thank you to everyone for joining us and we will be back Wednesday of next week. Thank you, everybody.